All right, good evening. Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. First, I would like to welcome the Acton Board of Selectmen for attending tonight's meeting for the purpose of selecting a school committee member. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to one of our regular scheduled meetings. We -- it's really very kind of you. I'm going to turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to members of the audience. Welcome to our school committee meeting this evening. I'd like to make just a few comments on the opening of school. By all accounts, I'm pleased to report we've had what I would say is a very, very successful school opening week. The week actually began last Wednesday when all of our staff were welcomed back to a new school year with -- at our annual all-staff meeting. The opening meeting, my observations is that it was a very enthusiastic gathering of staff. People were excited to be back. The meeting, that meeting included some staff recognition, included a lot of introductions of new staff, many acknowledgements. There were excellent remarks made by the chair of the school committee, Amy, thank you, by -- I'm trying to read my notes. Certainly some very excellent remarks by our association president and our deputy superintendent. There was also a preview of the upcoming year, and I can tell you that that event was very well organized. I thought it was very well planned, and none of which I can take credit for. That was all done well ahead of time, so thank you to all of those who were involved in that. On Tuesday, we welcomed all of our K-6 students back to school, as well as our 7th and 9th grade students. They were all joined on Wednesday by the remainder of our students, our 8th graders, our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, and over the course of those two days, we welcomed back over 5,700 students to the Acton-Boxboro regional schools. Marie Dawn and Deb and I had the opportunity on Tuesday to visit all of our schools, and what I can report to you was that everyone appeared well settled, well-prepared, again, very enthusiastic, and I will tell you, I've done -- I won't tell you how many of these opening days I've done, because that may reveal how old I really am, but I was very, very, very impressed with all of the school visits and very, very pleased. In terms of transportation, opening week has gone relatively smooth. Again, in all the years I've been doing this, my experience is that wherever I've been the first few weeks, there are some transportation kinks that have to be worked out and ironed out, and we're doing that. There will be some tweaks and adjustments. I will tell you, this week, the central office has received just one inquiry, one call, one complaint, we'll call it what it is, and that's different where I've been in the past. Usually, the phone is off the hook, so that's good, and we're currently working with that small group of parents to see if we can work through what those issues are. I'm also pleased to report that all of our buildings are all cleaned, they were shiny, ready to go, and the one piece that we were hoping at last -- my last understanding is that we still had a little bit to go with the completion of the Blanchard School playground, but that's on its way to being completed, so our hope is that that will happen very quickly. And then, lastly, what I'd like to say is that the opening, the very smooth opening like this, does not just magically happen, of course. Many individuals and many groups make this happen, and so I want to extend my thanks and my commendations to all of our custodial and maintenance staff who worked really hard over the summer to get our buildings into the shape that we expect, secretarial and administrative assistant staff who work over the summer to make the magic happen, working with their school-based administrators, the central office staff and the central office administration under Marie's leadership, I think, did just a fabulous job in coordinating all of the efforts to make sure that the 2017-2018 school year opened on a very, very positive note. So we're all looking forward to a very productive and successful school year for 2017-18, and I'm feeling really good about that. Thank you.
Marie, do you have an enrollment report?
Thank you. So in your packet, we put the September 1 enrollment numbers in. Now, I give them cautiously, because that was before school started, and the numbers are changing every day, and in particular, some kids who withdraw, we don't actually know about until after school starts, so some of the numbers are actually going down a little bit, but it is informative, and as you know, the official numbers will come October 1, after things settle down. I put in the last year's report as well, which gave you September through June of last year for comparative purposes. The high school is right where we expected it to be, at 1,837, 1,841 kids. 1,837 was the projection, so right on target. It's down slightly from last year. October 1 last year was 1,866, so we're down 25 kids or so. The junior high, this was going to be a bump-up year, and that proved to be true, even a little bit more than we had projected, so we are actually up 53 kids at the junior high right now from October 1 of last year, and we're about 14 over-projection. So the junior high is at 9,64. It peaked at about 1,000, so it's just under the peak of eight to 10 years ago. So it's up from 9,11 last year to 9,64. We did know this group of kids was coming through, and this was going to be a particularly large class. Interestingly, the junior high enrolled 51 students for this year, new students, which is 50 -- I'm sorry, they enrolled 55 students, and they normally have 30 to 35 over the summer, and they had 55 this summer. Now, some left as well, but -- so that was a pretty big increase. And then, K-6 is down slightly from last year. It is over-projection, though, and the big one is kindergarten, and we've been talking about it for months, and it keeps growing. So the housing turnover is proving to have an impact at the kindergarten level, so as of today, we have 354 kindergarteners. Our projection was 298, so it's 56 over-projection, and 33 of those were in Acton, and 23 of those were in Boxboro. And so for Boxboro, 23 over-projection, the projection was 66, so it's like 35% to 40% above-projection, and we knew that the new development was coming online, starting in June, moving forward, so that certainly had an impact. It didn't have that much of an impact at the other grades. In Boxboro, each grade is three to six above-projection, but kindergarten is 23 above-projection. In Acton, first grade was below-projection by 12, so that was kind of interesting, but kindergarten was over by 32. All that being said, you might remember, we added a kindergarten in the budget, then we added another one in the spring. We added one to Blanchard in the budget, and then we added one to McCarthy Town in June, July, and maybe it was even May, but that all proved to be very important. So the class sizes are still okay, we're still at 19 and 20 in our kindergartens. So we wanted to give you some preliminary numbers. In case anybody wonders, we are still in an enrollment decline, even though kindergarten is higher and has been higher for a couple of years. We're down almost 400 kids, K-6, from our peak, and we're down about 150 at the high school from our peak, and overall, about 500, K-12, from our peak. So we are in a decline, and just over time, it's going to keep going down about another 300 students over the next five to seven years. Happy to answer any questions.
I know we had talk last spring, or whatever, about the new housing going up in Maynard, so are we going to watch that, just because it seems like this new housing, when it's apartments, might have younger children? Are we going to watch that, at least for next year? Because we get half of those, right? I know that there's been discussion, how many of that complex we'll get versus Maynard we'll get, so...
Marie, do you want to answer that? I suspect that the Astrons are going to be including that into their projections going forward.
Yeah, we'll be watching all of those enrollment, all of those development projects. I'm not sure the status of that particular project. I don't know how far along it is, but it's on, I believe, the Maynard Concord Acton line. I don't think it's half, half of them are in Acton? I don't know. More than half? Oh, okay. And is it moving forward?
It hasn't started permitting process.
Okay. Yep, so the town manager says it hasn't started permitting process. So yes, Deanna, we will watch that. That's part of what goes into the enrollment projections.
Oh, yeah, Tessa?
Do we have a plan for 4th grade? Since out of 17 sections, only one is less than 24 kids, and most of them are at 25, and they still have two more years in elementary? I ask because of personal reasons, but I imagine that it -- I know that, I mean, they're huge, and they still have two more years, and I know what happened in my now 7th graders' class between 4th grade and 6th grade, so that's kind of concerning.
So, Tessa, we'll keep looking at that. We added a classroom there last summer. The problem is, if you add it, the later you add it, the less you can do to help, because it goes into one school, and plus, our classrooms are actually all full right now. We actually had to build a classroom to add that kindergarten at McCarthy Town, so we'll keep watching it. We're amazed that it all filled up, that we added, again, last year, we added one in the budget and one after the budget for 4th grade, and you're right, they're all at 24 and 25. Where we added it was Conan, and they're all at 23, with one at 24. So we'll keep watching it, and we can talk about it at budget time, but space is also an issue.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I'm going to move on to the warrant, but I don't have a copy of the cover page, so if I could just grab that from you? I think it's in there? Yep. Okay. We have a warrant for 18-005 PR for August 31, 17, $276,073.04. 18-005 for 9/7/17, $2,735,144.06. And the payroll, P-1805 and P-1805V for, from August 31, 2017, for $534,624.60. For a total of $3,545,842.25. Okay, do you want to say anything before I move this? Okay. All right. So at this time, I'd like to invite the Acton Board of Selectmen to join us and ask that any Boxboro members and administrators just take a seat over to the right. I am also going to ask our three candidates to come up, and we're going to have you three sit up here. So we'll do, yeah, so we're going to do school committee over on this side, and then Board of Selectmen over here, and I'm going to grab your seat, Maya.
Amy, should I, Amy, should I do introductions? Is this working?
No, you have to turn the mic off.
It's on. Yeah, it is lit, but it, what do I have to, put this right up to my mouth? Okay. Our microphones are so sensitive, but all right. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order, and some quick introductions, because I have a feeling that some people in this room spend more time in this room, and it's on. What do I have to put it in my mouth? I'm sorry, I refuse to do that. Anyhow, is that, is that better? Okay, I'll yell on top of it. This is defeating the whole purpose of having a microphone, but anyhow, I am Janet DiDaci. I'm this year's chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Katie Green, who is the vice chairman. She's also the liaison for the board to the school committee. Next to her is Peter Berry, who was last year's chairman. Next to him is our clerk, Joan, Joan, God, Joan Gardner, sorry, who was last on the board about, well, a while ago, and finally, Ching Sung Chang. I would just like to thank the school committee for hosting this, because our facilities in town hall and elsewhere were either tied up, or they didn't have live broadcast coverage, and I felt that it was important to have live coverage rather than a video that people would watch later. So I'm looking forward to an expeditious meeting and decision, because this is an extra meeting for us. We have our regular meeting next Monday, and we also have other meetings that we do, so anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I can introduce the school committee. Deanna Sullivan, we have Diane Baum, Eileen Zhang, Maya Minkin, and Paul Murphy down at the end. So thank you all for being here, and yeah, you want to?
I forgot to mention that our...
Yeah, he's there.
Our town manager is at the very end. I can't see him, I'm not tall enough, but Steve Ledoux is at the end to add gravitas to our board, so thank you.
Okay, so I would like to thank all of you for being here, and really, just for being willing to come and volunteer your time and to step up, and this is a big job, so thank you all so much for coming and putting your names forward. So what we're going to do is, we'll start with statements from each of the candidates, then we will move into questions and answers from the committee members, and then the school committee, I'm sorry, and the Board of Selectmen, and I hope that maybe we can keep the answers to under a minute, because if everybody's, you know, do the math, if everybody asks a question and then everybody wants to answer, we could be here for a while, so we can just kind of try to keep our questions and answers brief, and then we'll open it up to public comment questions. After that, we'll come back and deliberate and hopefully vote. So that's kind of the plan. I'm going to start alphabetically, which I guess is how you're sitting, so Dennis, Bruce.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to present myself and my credentials. My name is Dennis Bruce. I have been in Acton resident since 2004. I'm married, I have two children. My daughter is, this year, is a freshman at AB in the high school, and a member, proud member of the JV field hockey team, and my son is a sophomore this year, and he is another proud member of the boys' JV soccer team. I have, I've been a school committee member for four years. During that time, I've had the pleasure of working with the Board of Selectmen. I've sat two years on ALG. I've been the representative of the school committee for the OPEP, Towns' OPEP Board. I've been the representative for Acton, the school committee's representative of Acton FinCon, and I've participated in a whole host of meetings over a four-year time that give me an experience level in a way that I can help the school committee, starting this evening, if I was to be lucky enough to earn everybody's vote. So I think, yes, experience matters in some cases, and experience matters in a lot of cases, and in this case, from what I can see what the committee needs, it's a steady hand to help them get through their agenda from now until the end, and right up until town meeting of this year. So I look forward to answering all your questions and addressing anything that anybody has. Thank you.
Phone person. I'm Rachel Rodman. I, we moved to Acton over the summer from Colorado, where we were for three years. Before that, we were in Boxboro. There's a few different things I think I bring that are unique, that would be unique to the committee. The first is perspective, since we've been in, we started off in Boxboro, my children started off their education in Boxboro, but then we were in Colorado, where they were in public schools, then they were in charter schools, and then they were in private schools, and we have three children, so there was varying amounts of them in each of those schools at different times. I worked for three years in Colorado as a school RN in two different districts. As a school RN, I worked with many different players that go into making a successful student, like our parents, administrators, teachers, pediatric providers, physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech-language therapists, and I've written on hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of IEPs. We are the only liaison for any child with any diagnosis of any type to the school and the pediatric provider, including, of course, all of the 504 meetings that go along as well, and the school, the most recent school district I was at in Colorado, 84% of our students were English language learners, 84, which is the highest rate actually in Colorado, so the highest need in Colorado, in any of the districts that we have. So I really do understand, I think, pretty well, the need that not just the students have when they're English language learners, but that the parents have as well. Before I went to nursing school, I was a social worker, which I know is strange, but to have gone back to school again when I was 40, but as a social worker, I worked in university medical settings. What I did there was really bring together systems to access services for our, for the patient, and I mean multiple different systems, like Department of Corrections, and Housing, and Public Insurance, and Public Welfare, hospice, and end-of-life decision-making, and stuff like that. I really think that we can bring together different systems, and there's, I've lived in a lot of different places, and I think that there are worse things going on in the world than a community that cares so deeply about its school district, about its public school district. That's it.
Hello, everyone. My name is Angie So, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present myself. And for me, I think the value that I can bring, I have a diverse background, and with my project management experience, the management experience, I'm hoping to shaping, not shaping, helping the process from a more systematic approach. And I have two kids who grew up in Acton-Boxboro, and one in college right now, and one in high school, and was there when I'm growing up with them, and I learned a lot from the parents' perspective, as well as the, the, from the, what, learn from them for the students' experience. So I work with, when I, my son was in high school, and the, I helping in the club, and I was helping, assisting him in the non-school sports, and I was helping, shaping up the team and helping on the sports. So the value that I can bring to the, to the school committee, and I'm looking, really looking forward to working with all of you, to, with a more systematic approach and in terms of process, and so I can work in helping in a lot of communications as well. And so I really believe in education, and I believe the education is, it's a, I really want to continue to support the great experience that my children has experienced, and continuing, continuing the joy of learning, and the, and the, what they can get from the school system. And so I, and I ran for the campaign last time, for the last, in March, and I have had a chance to meet a lot of parents, who gave me a lot of insight of, and what they concern, and the challenge they're facing, and they give me a lot of valuable feedback on that. So I'm really looking forward to, I'm really looking forward that I can, we can look at all these challenges together and for, that facing our district, and also, I really appreciate the town of Acton was, was always open-minded, and that I moved to Acton 17 years ago, and I immersed into the Acton was, was very, and we had, we had, we had a really good, you know, experience in Acton. I really hope that the, we can continue this process, and I hope, because I live here long enough, and I want to take the opportunity to give back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am going to open it up to questions from the, either Board of Selectmen or the school committee members, so...
Amy, what I suggest is you, you manage the questions and comments from your board, and then when you're done, I was just referring to you in the school committee to start first...
Would you like me to just have these first, and then?
And then, you know, turn it over to us, and we'll, we'll deal.
Sure, absolutely. We planned this beforehand, by the way, so...
Do I have any questions from the Acton school committee members?
I know. So this year, we have a lot of new initiatives, I'm sure you're aware. What do you find the biggest initiative for you for this year? You know, that's not a great question. What do you see the biggest challenge, I guess, with these initiatives for this year? Just trying to put it in the...
No, you're right. No...
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's all free, if you can each answer, if you want to go in the same order, or go, whatever you want.
Well, you have time-sensitive ones, and then you have ones that you norm, the time-sensitive ones, like the school building project. You have the normal ones, like you have the budget coming up, which is, that you're not pushing off, because you got to get it to town meeting, and then eventually, you have to decide if you're going to go through a superintendent's search. It's kind of three big things right there. The first piece is, you know, it's pretty well gone down its path right now. I mean, there will, there'll be a vote tonight, and you'll be able to take it to town meeting at that point in December, so I don't think any one of us, if we're lucky enough to be named onto the committee, could help that component, but the budget process is really important, and we know what happens when that thing starts to rear its head, and that, you know, come September, October, November, all the information starts coming in, December, it really starts... Thank you very much. I am going to open it up to questions from the, either Board of Selectmen or the school committee members.
Amy, what I suggest is you, you manage the questions and comments from your board, and then when you're done, I was just referring to you in the school committee.
Oh, would you like me to just have these first?
And then, you know, turn it over to us, and we'll, we'll deal.
Sure, absolutely. We planned this beforehand, by the way, so. Do I have any questions from the Acton School Committee members?
I know. So this year, we have a lot of new initiatives, I'm sure you're aware. What do you find the biggest initiative for you for this year? You know, that's not a great question. What do you see the biggest challenge, I guess, with these initiatives for this year?
No, you're right.
Well, you have time-sensitive ones, and then you have ones that you norm, the time-sensitive ones, like the school building project. You have the normal ones, like you have the budget coming up, which is, that you're not pushing off, because you gotta get it to town meeting. And then eventually, you have to decide if you're gonna go through a superintendent's search. It's kind of three big things right there. The first piece is, you know, it's pretty well gone down its path right now. I mean, there will, there'll be a vote tonight, and you'll be able to take it to town meeting at that point in December. So, I don't think any one of us, if we're lucky enough to be named onto the committee, could help that component. But the budget process is really important. And we know what happens when that thing starts to rear its head. And that, you know, come September, October, November, all the information starts coming in, December, it really starts to come in. January, the books come out, and you've got to be able to sit down and go through that component of it, because you have to be able to get your budget to town meeting. So I think, you know, ultimately, that becomes the big one.
Well, I'm not sure that any of them are super exciting, but I really like the challenge success. I mean, as a nurse, I think wellness is really an overlooked component, a part of a successful student and a, and a healthy community. I would think that, I mean, obviously, you have the, the building projects and a budget, which are less flashy, but clearly very important. And, I mean, you have to, the, I mean, the building projects, for me, is, a budget is gonna come, because it's time-sensitive, and it's pressing, it must come. A building project, in a way, as towns, we've, because it's not quite as flashy, but it needs to be a priority. But I like that you're focusing really on wellness and an approach that is meant to be, help students understand what success is beyond just academics.
I agree with Dennis, the three biggest challenge that, which is, one is the building project that everybody's aware of, and the, we're looking for the superintendent as well. And we're also, also looking for the, as, after permanent superintendent, we need to, well, not after, we need to also have the high school principal that's missing here. So, how to approach this? And I actually, I think for my, for me, the priority, which is building the robust and the process for searching a permanent superintendent, as well as, and, as well as the getting the community support for the building project. I think that's two very important thing that's facing us.
Other questions from Acton? No, wait, let's everybody go first. Maya?
Hi, I just wanna thank you all for being willing to volunteer on this committee. I think it's wonderful, and you're all seem like excellent candidates to me. Will be a very tough decision. I'm wondering what you think you can contribute to our committee in terms of community outreach? I think that's one of the, the things we are, have been working hard to, to undertake in the last couple of years, and I think now is not time to lose sight of that goal, and just thought you might explain a little bit about what you think you have to offer to that mission.
So before I joined the school committee, and even when I was on the school committee, I spent a number of years coaching a lot of kids in this town, whether it was baseball, soccer, girls' lacrosse. I spent a few years on the Board of AB Girls' Youth Lacrosse, and through those endeavors, plus two years on the Gates PTO. So through those endeavors, I've met a lot of parents and a lot of people in town, and we've had a number of conversations. Heck, I've had a number of conversations just in the last five months with parents about what's going on around the school committee. So, listening to the constituents is important, reaching out to them is important. Ultimately, this committee still has to do its work. Ultimately, and I know there's a lot of buzz around what happened with the superintendent, but ultimately, it's this committee that gets to make that decision, with input from themselves and from the community. But ultimately, it's the decision of this committee, whether to have a superintendent's search this year, next year, whatever year they want to have it, who the superintendent is or who it is not, right? But you still have to listen to the people in this community and hear what they have to say. But ultimately, it is still your decision to make on any one of these initiatives that we've been talking about tonight.
Actually, Acton, Boxborough, when we first moved here, we moved here from another country, it was not that welcoming of a place to come. I think there's a lot that we can do to, you know, with our new families, for example, that we were just talking about kindergarten enrollment, there's a lot that we can do to make families feel more comfortable in the area. We had a friend, my daughter's friend left, left Boxborough not too long ago, and she said that she felt like when she walked into Blanchard, people looked down on her because of the way that she dressed. And so I just, I, and I heard what she was saying, and I can see that that could occur. There's, anyway, there's a lot that we can do. I mean, we have great, we have great PTOs, but we can reach out more to new families. There's a vocal part of the community right now, and I, I think that we can reach out to all of these different parts of our community, because we have, like I said, there's, there's this community that cares very deeply about its public school system. I've seen some school districts, I worked in a school district, where we went, for example, without a board member for quite a while, because no one was interested in volunteering. So I've seen it go poorly, and I've seen it go well. I think keeping up the communication, keeping up the dialogue are things that we can do on a more administrative level and on a committee level, but all the way down to the schools and the welcoming, which often comes from families, encouraging them to welcome people that are new to the community. I think that those are vital parts to having a successful community.
Yeah, for me, that the, I think if you're talking about, like, surveys, you're talking about how to get the feedback from the community. And my approach that I would, I would look at from a more systematic approach, which is from, because we have technology right now that support us for in terms of communication. Right now, the problem is, we have information overload right now from different sources, and, and we, we can centralize and build a trustworthy and information-sharing system that we can, you know, constantly feed good people, information that people cares about, and let people to have a real feedback, and more of an interaction platform that we can, we can really communicate with them, then I think that's what people want, because with a clear process, I think the way that's, a lot of time, a lot of people really want to help, and a lot of, we really have a lot of expertise and experience in the town. And, but with all the clear process and, or a chart, and so people doesn't really know where to start, and where, when, when this is gonna happen, how, how can they help? So I think if we can have like a matrix, and in terms of how the decision-making process, and so people can be engaged at the time when, when they want to provide their input and needed, and they will be, really, you know, we will be able to get more people, more engaged people from, from all over, and we, for the survey, then we will be able to know where to reach out to people for different, different, you know, there is, there is ton of Acton, there's not only the parents, there is the, the seniors, there is the people that who may not know how the, what the school is happening, but there are also taxpayers. So I think that there are areas that we will be able to reach out to the, a deeper connection with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you feel, I think maybe we should let you guys do some questions and then come back?
All right. Board of Selectmen, questions? Katie?
So thank you all for putting your names forward. Dennis, you know how much work it is, so I think you know especially that this is not a, an easy thing to put your hand up for, so thank you all for doing that. My question is that, now that Acton, Boxborough, since regionalization, is a completely separate entity from the two towns, what do you view as the role? How should the school, the school committee interact with the two towns, Boards of Selectmen, finance committees, and town staff? What are ways to improve that communication?
Well, I've been lucky enough to be thrown in the middle of that in my last couple of years on, on the school committee. I was a member of ALG for two years. I was representative of FinCon, so we had to work with, and I did a number of presentations to the Board of Selectmen, and we had to work with the Board of Selectmen, especially through ALG, from a budgeting process. That communication component worked, having your representatives here on the committee to FinCon, to the Board of Selectmen, and having that open dialogue worked. It's, it's worked in the past. Yeah, I mean, when we went through regionalization, it was a, it was a, that was a big deal. And it was a very, and we talk about how contentious things are now, but that was contentious back then, too. But yet, the school committee was able to get through it, because we had some very experienced people on the committee, that knew what it was like to talk to Board of Selectmen, talk to FinCon, whether it was personally or through ALG. So, and then, and work with the staff. You know, I worked with the staff at Town Hall while as a member of ALG, and working through the budget spreadsheet. So, I just, I believe we would just continue that, that level of conversation and interaction.
I just think keeping an open dialogue and communicating, the clear communication back and forth, clear expectations of what the question is, so that the time is used most efficiently is super respectful. If questions are clear, they can be answered. Communication and dialogue that needs to occur around something can be efficient, and then people don't probably, probably are, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. So, anyway, I don't nearly have the experience that Dennis has, but I think, obviously, you have to keep open your communication. It's just like when you're working with administration, and you're working with teachers, and you're working with parents around a specific student, knowing, we have some very complicated students for a variety of reasons. You have to keep the communication for all of those people open, and they all, all of the adults that are interacting have to feel like they're all on the same page, and they know what the clear expectations are of them. Or you'll have a student who can't be as successful, but you can even, I mean, in my experience, you can have students that do, that can end up in dangerous situations, because no, the, the pathway was not made clear for everyone, so.
Because FinCon and school committee and Board of Selectmen, it's, you, it's like a one family, you know, we, three entities that we work together to, for, for the town. So I think, to me, that I still come, coming back to the process, that the, if I'm approaching this one, is I kind of, because I'm not as experienced as Dennis, and I need to understand what is the current communication process, the channel, and, and kind of look at how we can build the relationship and the trust, and through the different entities, from different activities, that I think the relationship and trust that has to, you know, I know that you guys have relationship trust, but how to enhance that, how to make that even more actively, and, and build a clear process, so people knows how you approach the decision, how, why you make that decision, and so people understand the background and understand the why, then when you are communicating, it will be, you'll be easier, and with, with the same val, with the respective value, then we, we know where the person is, where he's coming from, and the decision will be easier. Thank you.
Peter?
Given the relative size of the school district versus the town, the school district has been the biggest driver in budget increases, and that certainly is understandable. I mean, the school districts' increases have been more in percentage-wise than the town over the last few years. Many people are concerned about the size of increases versus hard economic times. That's certainly understandable, given the various needs of different categories of students that you've had to take on, you know, over the years. But I am the liaison to the Council on Aging in Acton, and I was at a board meeting today. The biggest concern of most of elderly people in town, older people, is the increases in taxes and their ability to meet that. So my question is, how do you weigh, when you're considering the budget, the, the concerns of taxpayers to be able to pay tax increases versus the inability of a school district to meet ideally all of the needs that you have to fund? Obviously, you can't fund every initiative that you need to do, so how do you weigh that internally in your own mind? How do those two balance against each other?
Believe me, it's not just for senior citizens, it's for everybody, I think. I think the, the weight actually is ultimately not coming from, from individual, you know, it's the town, then how everybody's value, how, where their value in different entities. So I think that's the ultimate decision, and I think school committee definitely need to work out when, well, I'm sure that school committee is not gonna take the, any increase lightly, and will take all the, any, all the options, we're gonna, we will explore the all the options, and to see what other alternative and other, and make sure that this is, this is the best solution that we, that school committee can be, will be able to find. I don't think this is a, this, I, I'm pretty confident that the school committee, when they look at the, you know, any increase, will not be looked at lightly, and I think ultimately, it's the value, you know, because if you only have ten dollars in the pocket, and if you're gonna buy a popsicle, you're gonna buy candy, you know, you have to, it's, it's a value system that we're, we're, I think that's, has to be collectively coming from the town of Acton, when a resident, and for other people, not, not just the parents, you know, because it's a taxpayer. I think that's, is a collective, it's a collaboration, it's a collective work. Thank you.
I think that these problems are solvable, I really do. I think, for example, there are many, there are a lot of different solutions that we can look at. There's a lot of different school districts in the country, and we can take ideas from them. I understand, I, I understand your point, and I think it's a very valid one. And I, but for example, while we were in Colorado, we transported our own children to public school, because there are no buses, to public school. So, children as young as four are expected to walk two miles. That's with a straight face. So, there are a lot of different options that we can explore. I can't, I'm sure, I'm not gonna try to answer all of them right now, but the, I, we, if you reach out to other school districts, if you study other school districts, they can, they'll tell you some of their, but I mean, we, we've been in schools where they charge a lot more for full-day kindergarten, for example, bringing preschools back in. Those are ways to actually generate revenue. I don't know if, in Colorado, for example, we charge Medicaid as RNs on our IEPs, because we're providers. If we have people that are licensed in our, we have people that are licensed in our schools right now, LICSW, school psychologist, I don't know if they're charging for their services. Anyway, there's ways to generate revenue, there's of course ways to try to save revenue. I don't know that, I don't know if we've, as a school district, looked at all of them, but it's, it's, and I can understand how it can be a priority for many people, for all people. Living in a good school district has, while your taxes are higher, your real estate values are usually very closely correlated. So, there can be an upside to having a really good school, school district as well, in terms of what your real estate values are. Not to mention one of the safest places in the country, given, given some of the places that we've lived.
Peter, this, this question, since the day I moved here, I've been hearing this every single year, and I don't think there's a great answer for it. But the one thing that I have seen over the years, whether I was on the board or wasn't on the board, is each one of the committees, I know the school committee feels that they represent the town, but they represent the children, and they represent the parents of those children. And I know the Board of Selectmen probably feel the same way, that they represent the whole town, but yet there's that other part of town that they probably feel a closeness to, and feel to, and feel like that, you know, you're listening to them. The, what we have chosen over the few, past few years, the past number of years, is for each of the boards to take a look at their priorities, have an honest conversation with, with themselves, with, with Town Hall, with the, the administration here, and figure out what their priorities are for the year, what that spend needs to look like, what it needs to be, and then have your representatives go to ALG, and sit around, and, you know, with professional mediation, basically, or moderator, I should say, and get to that issue. And, and come, we, we've been lucky enough to come to, to Town Meeting every year, with a budget that we've agreed upon. There's some years where more of us, less of us agreed upon it than, than other years, but we've always been, we've always been able to get there. Sometimes neither party liked what they, what they saw, which maybe meant that there was a pretty decent deal cut on both sides. But there's no easy answer for people who feel that if they're on a fixed income, and they feel they can't pay for the increases. I don't see any other community's taxes going down either. So, I think we're in that spiral, where, from a revenue perspective, versus, you know, what, the expenditures always look more than what the revenue increases are.
So, um, like I just mentioned, that I like to use the systematic approach, which, you know, there are ways that you can put, different people can input their value system, and put a different weight on that, and do a mathematic calculation, and have a conclusion on most maturity, what they're, what they're thinking, and reach out the decision in a process like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I do want to reiterate or support everyone else's statements about your qualifications, and thank you for being willing to serve the town. In my own view, you're all qualified, and it'll, you know, we can't make a mistake by choosing one of you, which will be a difficult decision, so.
Anyone else on the board? Joan?
If you are voted in tonight, will you run for reelection in the spring?
So, whoever gets voted in tonight, when the spring rolls around, they have a chance to run for a one-year term, or there'll be two openings, I believe, for a three-year term. The deal I made with my family is I will not be running for reelection. My job and the idea that I had was to help the committee settle things down, steady the ship a little bit from now until the end of March, and then I'll walk back to my nice, quiet life.
I don't blame you. Not at all. I, I think that I would run for, for reelection. I can't tell you how thrilled I am to be back here. While we were in Colorado searching for the right fit for three different children, I really missed Acton, Moxborough, really, and I'm not from here. I'm from the Midwest. So, I'm thrilled to be back, and I would love to be a part of the committee and be, play a bigger role in the community. I'm not working right now. I haven't even started to look for anything, and I'm not sure that I want to. I don't, one of the things that brought us back here was that my husband now works in Europe, so this is an easier commute from, from Colorado, but it makes it hard to be employed when your spouse is out of the country all the time.
Well, I'm just surprised that this is an easy commute to Colorado. Yeah, for me, that, um, actually, somebody else just asked me the question today, and I will proceed in, as a, you know, with a project manager background, and it's, if there's something happened then, for, from the family, then I, or a health situation, then I will not proceed, but in current constitution, yes, I will.
Ching Sung?
Okay, so I have three different questions, one for each of you. So, you're not, I'll get, I'll get to answer the same question. So, to Angie, you've spoken a lot about process and a kind of systematic approach to solving problems and to improving sort of what the committee is intending to do. So, I guess, and you have some familiarity with the level of, of, of archadness and the sort of, the sort of institutionalized action way that these kinds of boards and committees proceed. So, how do you reconcile your desire to, for systematic change with the fact that these boards and committees are governed by a pretty significant set of rules, as well as have sort of an institutionalized way that things are done?
Okay. This is a loaded question. Well, I have to say, as a newcomer, I think the first thing for me to get on board is I have to learn a lot of the regulations, as well as the process. I will have to, with, it's really, it's the, with the information that I receive, then I will have to look at, and to see what kind, what can I do with the process that will be based on my experience, and, you know, how this, what the situation is. But mainly, I think the, I think the focus right now, that it's back to the challenge that we're facing. So, it's how we can reach to the agreement that will benefit most of our students and the town of Acton. I think that's the, the ultimate goal here. And it's, when I say the, the process, it's, it's the, you have to, you have to work, it's like a, it's, you have to combine the experience and the expertise and the knowledge that, together, so that you can build something that valuable and be able to benefit for the people. Thank you.
Okay, Rachel. So, I guess you have a different sort of background from the other two, in that you've spent a significant amount of time in other school districts. So, my question to you is, what sort of best practices do you see from other school districts that you would like to bring to Acton, and help implement in sort of areas where you feel our school district could be doing better?
So, the most recent school district that I worked in Colorado was what's called a turnaround district. It means the state, the Colorado Department of Education, has designated as so poor-performing that it's threatening the district that it's going to actually take over its administration. So, what we brought in was, and of the, I think roughly 130-ish or so school districts in Colorado, there were only five that were this poor-performing. What we did was, we brought in someone from out of district, and we streamlined all of our practices across all of our schools, so that we're all doing the exact same thing. Right now, for example, I'm not sure that all of our elementary schools are applying some, some best practices in the same way, like MTSS. That should be uniform, right? We should all be applying MTSS in the same way, and then do, reevaluating constantly with RTI. That's what it's supposed to be all about. And really good school districts do that. That's just an example. But there should be uniformity across all of the schools with what we're doing, and in our elementaries, which of course is the areas that are different, we're, we're not doing some things. That's, that's one idea. I don't know how else to answer that question. Is that good?
Okay, that's, that's reasonable. I was just interested in hearing some insight. That's fine. So, Dennis, I guess, so you just stated that you have no intention of continuing, of sort of continuing in this position after serving out this short term. So, my question to you is, what, what motivates you to come back at this specific time, in terms of why do you think it needs to be you and not someone else specifically to, to, to fill this short gap, if you don't intend to continue in the position?
During my four years, we had, I participated in a teacher negotiation, which was very contentious. It lasted 18 months. We had picketing, we had people who were mad at us, we had people who were calling for our resignation. I went through regionalization. I actually represented the school committee at Town Meeting and presented regionalization for a vote. At that time, I had a couple of things written about me and some other members of the committee. And then, in the last superintendent search, there were some people that were unhappy with us and had some things to say, and, but yet, we were able to get through all of those. And the reason we were able to get through all of them is because we had people on the committee that had institutional knowledge and a deep understanding of what it meant to really be a strong school committee member, and had the experience behind them. People like Bridget Bieber, Mike Coppolino, Shuang Kong. These people were able to, as the winds were blowing, and the seas were high, and people were, you know, getting mad at us, they were able to calm everybody down. They acted like an anchor that we were able to hold on to, because of their experience level, because of they had done it before. So, and then, at some point, the winds died down, the seas get calm, and you're able to keep sailing on into the path that you want to go. So, I think the reason why I decided to put my name forward was because I wanted to be that anchor. I wanted to be that foundation that this current school committee could depend upon as they get through this tough time and start moving forward and getting, getting on with their agenda.
So, then, so then, my question to you, my follow-up question to you related to that is, obviously, some of the issues that we're dealing with in the school committee right now are the contentious issues that have motivated you to come forward, to serve that role. Do you feel like those issues will be resolved during this, during the time that you would be appointed, and do you have confidence that, you know, that, that this sort of contentiousness and this period of sort of quote-unquote "stormy seas" is not going to last beyond the, much beyond the end of, of the current term that you're being appointed to fill?
I don't think anybody can tell or answer that from the standpoint of, will it be done by March? I would like to think we can get that way. I know in the past, anytime we've gone through a contentious issue, at some point, things started to turn, and the school committee would, would find its way, and things got better a, as time would move on. I'd like to think we'd be able to get there. There are a number of things that we have to concentrate and get done for the children of this community, and for the parents of this community. But whether it's all going to be, you know, we have to fight one battle at a time. We're not going to be able to take every single issue that people in this community have and address it within the first few months. But as time goes by and more trust is built, I think we'll be able to get there. Whether it happens in March, I'd like to think so, but, you know, I'll, I'll tell you in April.
Well, the beauty of going last is I, I don't have any questions, because everybody else has asked them, so I'm going to hand it back to, to you, Amy, and the school committee for any additional questions.
Thank you. So, another questions on the school committee? Yeah, Paul?
I, I have a more general question. You know, I, I've heard tell that we, we live in a civil society, and in the past few months, I've had some time to reflect on that, but I just want to hear what it means to you to be living in a civil society.
It's very profound, Paul. We live in a society where we'd like to think we're civil, but we also have access to a lot of different venues where we could voice our opinion. Sometimes we can voice our opinion face-to-face. Sometimes it's, you know, sometimes you have a few keyboard cowboys out there that can type a few things and, and hide behind it. But ultimately, if you're a public official, and you're sitting on the school committee, you have to understand that criticism comes with it. It just does. And if the real thing is how you deal with it. Do you internalize it? Do you lash out? Or you just let it go? Now, there's a reason why people might be complaining or be uncivil, and quite frankly, some of the reasons for that could be extremely valid. And that's our job, to cut through all the noise and figure out what piece is driving this, and is it a valid concern? Because in no way, you still have to address it. Otherwise, the noise level gets higher and higher and higher. So, you know, it kind of goes with the territory, being a public, being a public, you know, official. I think it's, it's not necessarily what you sign up for, but you know it's there when you sign up. So, ultimately, it's our job to be able to deal with it on a, you know, on an adult level.
Well, what I was saying earlier, I, I mean, I think we can continue, continue to have discourse, even with more, more vocal and less vocal, and reaching out, trying to, and I think, I mean, from what I've seen, and it's only been since this past summer, I've seen more reaching out from the school, from the school committee, really. The airing it on television, the, I've seen that people were complaining initially about the sound quality, but they're not complaining about that anymore. So, continuing the discourse. Otherwise, it's, and a lot of these complaints really are, some of them based in, in truth, yeah. And some of them are, people have legitimate complaints about taxes. People have legitimate complaints about a process. So, keeping the, the discourse open and reaching out to people that are vocal about it as well, and seeing what we can do to bring consensus back.
I think the, I agree with Dennis, which is, as any public figures, then there will be voices, and regardless, is how, it's more of how to look at the, the voices, and I think the voices, we have to look at, to see whether it's legitimate or just, just noise, okay? And if it's legitimate issues, then, and bring it up, and how we will be able to solve, and the noise will calm down. I think that's, that's how, it's more of each individual person, how you can, how you look at it, because if you look at it negatively, it's going to be negative. If you look at positively, it's going to be positive. And as far as the, your original question, which is the civilization, I think people who, I think we, we just be a model of our children. If there's something that we don't want our children do, we don't do it. I think that's kind of where I'm going. Thank you.
There anyone else from, Diane has a second question, and I'm opening it up, but before that, if there's anyone else has a question. Yeah, Eileen?
I think Denise already answered a part of my question. Yeah, did I? So, I think Denise already answered a part of my question, but still, I want to bring the table here. If any of you get elected, I mean, voted on to the, you know, board today, how do you, what do you think it's very important at this stage, work with the rest of us in the school committee, and how do you work with us? Thank you.
Let me just repeat your question. So, your question is, if one of us got elected tonight, then how do we work with the school committee?
I'm sorry, maybe I'll clear up my question. What do you think is the most important thing right now for you to join the school committee? And if you get elected, how do you work with all of us and work with the community?
So you are asking the priority, right? So what's the first thing then, if the person joined the board, the committee, what's the first thing the person will do? Is that the question? Sorry.
I want to clear about that, I'm sorry.
Is that a question?
I'm not sure.
So let me address both of what you said. Because I think from the first piece is how you're going to, if we get on the board, how are we going to be able to work with yourselves? Is that correct?
With everybody.
With everybody. Okay, thank you. So if, as a member of this board, you cannot walk on here with, hey, I've got all these ideas and that's it, and this is what we're going to do. This is a very collaborative effort. We talked a little about some institutional, not bias, but you know, the, how it gets locked down. And when you sit on ALG, or when you sit on the Board of Selectmen, and you sit on FinCom, or you sit on the school committee, there is a way to work. There's a way to work with each other and a way to work with the administration. You learn that pretty quickly. You tend to meet with the superintendent and get an idea pretty fast on the rules of engagement when it comes to people within the administration. And then, of course, you'll create personal relationships with each of the members on the school committee to be able to work in a much more collaborative effort going forward. Nobody comes on with this one grand idea and then drives the whole thing. This is a board of eleven people that works collaboratively, hopefully moving the agenda forward for each of the pieces that's on, you know, that's on that agenda. And including some of the bigger ones that are coming up, like the building committee, like the budget, like start times, like the new superintendent's search. So I think collaborative is the word that you want to hear, because that's the only way that a new member is going to come on board and be able to work within the team itself.
So I think for me, I would want to learn the process because obviously, I don't have the kind of experience knowing the process. But as I've come on board in previous positions that I've had, in the two occupations that I've had, as both a social worker and as a nurse, I work, you have to work collaboratively with everyone who's already established or it wouldn't be a position. It simply wouldn't work. There's, all of you have, you're all on subcommittees and you all play different roles. So for me, I would be getting to know what your roles are and trying to find the best fit for me within whatever, I don't know if there's going to be a reshuffling of assignments, but you guys would tell me that. I do, I mean, not to echo exactly what poor Dennis has said, since he's been answering a lot of these questions first. But I do think there's a process and I'm sure that you would point whomever it was in the right direction for beginning.
I think the relationship has to be there. And for myself, then if I join, then I think openness is the first thing that I will do, is which I will be open myself to all of you and to try to understand, that you understand me and I understand your perspective. And so we can work together. I think in my statement, and I use the collaborative, that word many, many times, I think that is the key word, because we need to learn each of us' perspectives. And I think for every issue that we have different agenda and different opinion, then we can find the fact and find the number and find the data, why we, and letting people communicate with each of you, then, and let you understand why I'm supporting this way versus that way. And I will be able to try to understand from your perspective, why you're supporting this way. And I think that can be done and that is, will be my approach.
One more point I want to make that I think is really important. I think the biggest thing that I could do to be a solid member of this committee is work hard from Friday to Wednesday. Because that's what it is about being a school committee member, is the work you put in Friday to Wednesday, to be prepared to have a spirited debate and make an informed vote on Thursday night. Showing up on Thursday night is the easy part of being a school committee member, right? That's simple. It's making sure you're ready for Thursday night. So it's those other six days of the week and being prepared and making sure I understand my packet, making sure I understand what the issue is, both sides of the issue. I learned that from other school committees to make sure I got multiple sides of the issue. And knowing who within the administration to talk to, to get down to what the real issues are. So when Thursday shows around, you can have, you can sound intelligent, you can be credible, and then you can make an informed vote. I think that's probably the biggest thing that I can do to help and to be part of this team.
Okay, Diane, you have one more, right?
So this is a very selfish question. But obviously, you know, we have two meetings a month on Thursdays, but we have many meetings as well during the month, either early mornings or in the evenings, you know, Selectmen meetings we go to and FinCom, although I haven't been going. But I'd like to know from each of you, what committees that you, because obviously, the biggest thing is, you know, we've lost a member who is doing a great deal of work on our committee. What committees are you interested in and that you would be willing to work on to help alleviate the load of the rest of the committee?
Well, I'm assuming-
Can I be really rude? Because that was my question. No, that was my question too. But no, 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 no. I just wanted to add, and how much time do you think you can contribute? Just thought of it in there. All right.
So I guess it would depend on what committees are open and what's available. You know, from my timing perspective, I work from home. So I have, and I run my own schedule. So I have a lot of flexibility. Nighttime's a lot easier, early morning's a lot easier. Getting in at like, you know, around the lunchtime time, you know, that can be easier for me. So, you know, I can drive my own schedule. I would probably say whatever, I hadn't looked at what openings were out there, but I know that Christina's name was on a number of them. So I imagine those would be, yeah, I would imagine those would be available. So, and I know she was on a lot of them too. So we'll probably start with those.
I actually don't know specifically which one she was on. I think she was on, I know she was on many as well, but I know, I think she was on the building committee. I like working with administrators. I really like it. I have a lot of respect for them. And in my positions, they've had a lot of respect for me as well. So, but I don't know if you guys are planning a reshuffling, or are you planning the position to just, to slide right into the positions that she, or I'm sorry, the committees that she, the subcommittees that she was on? Or do you know?
I mean, that's definitely open for discussion. So kind of depending on what happens tonight. Yeah, so I guess in general, I mean, are you available mornings? Are you available evenings? Are you available both?
Right, right. Yes, yeah, yeah, right. So I'm not working right now and I have a very flexible schedule. And I have a car. I don't know how else to say, I have a flexible schedule. I don't ride a horse to get to school. Do you have, do you, do you have any other questions about it?
Maybe, do you have, do you have young children? I don't know how old your children are. They can be alone in the evenings?
They are right now.
They are right now? Well, there you go.
They are right now. Yeah, yeah. So our oldest is in high, is in junior high now. So, yeah. So they can be home alone. I'm hoping I come back and there's three of them. You never know. Right.
Schedule-wise, I'm flexible and more flexible in the morning. For the committee that I'm interested, that I think the outreach, the committee, that would be probably the first one that I'm interested.
Okay, so if everybody's comfortable, I'm going to open it up to public participation. If you had a chance to pick up the policy for public participation, we limit it to two minutes. Maya is in charge of that. So, and she's tough. So watch out. She's going to take you out. But please come up. And it would be really helpful, actually, if you were planning to speak, if you could all kind of come up so we can get a sense of it. Because of course, we're running over. And it'd be good to kind of get a feel for how many people want to say something.
Good evening. Shuang Kong, Patna and Road in Acton. Well, this is the first time I was able to speak, but since the event triggered this, so I first would like to publicly thank Ms. Christina Regnick for her service and contribution to the Town of Acton. I also want to thank all three candidates. Rachel, I certainly looking forward to know more about you. And Angie is a good friend of mine. And I know she's passionate and ready to become an effective school committee member. Last time I voted for her, and I'm ready to vote for her again, should she make another run for school committee. But tonight, it is a vote of yours that counts. So I'm here to urge you to vote for Mr. Dennis Bruce for, because of his demonstrated leadership and experience on school committee. I know Dennis for more than ten years. We first volunteered together in the Gates Elementary School as parents, not students. And Dennis and his wife Beth were very active PTO members and were key organizers for annual auctions, the most important fundraising events, many of us know, for elementary school in terms of the classroom assistance and extracurricular activities. I also have the fortune to work with Dennis on school committee for several years. Dennis is an effective communicator. During his tenure, Dennis successfully guided our community to complete the full regionalization process through effective community outreach as well as persuasive public presentations. As we prepare for special town meeting in December, Dennis can provide the much leadership to articulate the rationales for various school building project alternatives. Dennis is a critical thinker. Using his strong analytical skills and in-depth school finance knowledge, Dennis was very effective in representing school committee to negotiate the complex labor negotiation with unions. Two-thirds of our local budget is spent on education. Dennis has a capacity and a knowledge to help our interim superintendent to craft a responsible and sustainable budget. Well, thank you. And I know you all also know Dennis is a great team player, and also he's an experienced school committee member, as he said earlier. So I urge you to vote for Dennis Bruce as our next interim school committee member. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Danny Factor, 11 Davis Road in Acton. I'm the parent of a college student who went all through the AB system from kindergarten all the way through Merriam to RJ Gray to the high school. And I personally have some pretty strong feelings about what makes a healthy school system. But the question that I have, you know, really boils down to one because I think it really covers all of these areas. In other words, you know, without certain things, you know, the system is not going to run effectively in any area. And I would like permission to ask the candidates a question, but it can just be answered by a show of hands. And it's this. Will each of you, by raising your hand, pledge to support a process in which our permanent superintendent is, rather than predetermined, chosen from a field of candidates, in which these candidates have the opportunity to appear in at least one public hearing and address questions and concerns from the general public of Acton and Boxborough? And if you agree with that, I ask for you to raise your hand, if you pledge to that.
But that's part of the normal process for when the superintendent's search happens, where the, where the finalists get a chance to meet the public and the public gets a chance to ask questions.
Well, I will say that in the last few searches, that has been the process. But there have been some concerns expressed about possibly not following that process. So I just want to, and of course, processes can always be changed. So I just, I just wanted to know, are all three of you committed to a search in which multiple candidates will be presented before the public for a public hearing? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Heather Hare from Acton. First, I just want to thank all three of you. I know that this is a huge commitment, that you bring your names forward for candidacy. And I think that it's remarkable, especially in this, in this day and age, when everyone is so busy and your plates are full, that you're volunteering for this role. So thank you all so much. I also think this is a time in our towns where there's a lot that's going on, certainly. We're looking at not only this position, but, you know, within the next six to nine months, an open election where there's, you know, other positions as well, including this one. So I'd urge the committees to both know, I know that the question was asked about what their intentions were going forward. I think that it's important to remember that each one of them, regardless of their intention, needs to then run for election. So it's not a given if one was to say one thing and another, that other members of our community might not also step forward. So that's just one question, or one issue I wanted to raise. The second thing I wanted to say is that I think we're, like I said, in a time where there's a lot of change in our communities. There's a lot going on. Certainly, there's some contention and some really strong initiatives that need to be moved forward. I'm here to support and urge you to support Dennis Bruce. I think that he brings to the table the ability to not only, Shuan put it beautifully, but to not only get on the committee and start making effective change and progress and initiative and all of the agenda items that you want, but he has experience. And I think right now, we're in a time where experience is very, very important. And I think he can lend a great hand to all of you. He's a proven leader in our communities. And I hope that you consider that when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Kim McCosker, 20 Joseph Reed Lane. I actually served on the committee from 2011 to 2014. And I'm not going to repeat. I'll just echo, sorry? I am out of practice. Do I have to hold it?
You have to stay close to it.
Okay, okay. In any case, I echo the statements that Heather and Shuan have already said about Dennis. I applaud both of the other candidates for coming here. I think that it's important to have a number of people I'm excited about, especially in seeing this, the opportunity in the next election. I want to say that it was in our election, my election in 2011 was perhaps the last time that there was as much, there were more people than spots. Since then, there's been a lot of times where that hasn't been the case, although I know yours was just recently. In any case, this position that you are looking to appoint is for five months. And I know it took me a year when I did my first, my term to get sorted through. So for this particular position, I would recommend, and I hope that you will vote for Dennis. But I am very hopeful that the other candidates will continue to be interested. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandhya Dasu, and I've been living in Acton for the last 12 years. I have a quick question for the three candidates. Thank you so much for deciding to volunteer your time to the school committee. But, I mean, we are all aware- but, I mean, we are all aware that there are a whole bunch of challenging decisions to be taken during the next year. So I have a question. How do you plan to balance the need to collaborate and come to a decision quickly versus maintaining your own set of ideas and principles without compromising on them just so you could come to a decision very quickly?
I learned a while ago, working on the committee, that you have to have a pretty solid process from a decision-making perspective. And once you have that process, then the data that you pick up from here, you pick up from talking to people in the administration, gets fed into that process. And ultimately, you'll make a decision. That decision won't be wrong. Now, the data that you put in could have been wrong, but the decision won't be wrong. You could have done a better job analyzing the data, but ultimately, if you have a pretty solid process in your mindset from how you come to a decision while sitting on this committee, you know, you'll be able to get there within the timeframe that's needed.
Before I make a major decision, I mean, for example, regarding a pediatric patient, I always collect as much information as I possibly can, and I can do it very quickly, because some of those decisions are life and death. But that doesn't mean that you can't absorb a large amount of information in a small amount of time.
It's based on data that for any, for the school committee, then the data will be collected by talking to the community members, and talking to school staff, and the community. And for any major decision, then you have to get feedback from different committee as well. So it's the data that will be able to support the decision process.
I'm just gonna ask that this be our last speaker, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I'm Yang Zhong, and living on 17 Hazona Street. As many of you know, that our community, our school district has been facing enormous challenges these days. And student wellness, special education, building project, searching for permanent superintendent, just name a few. I'm very grateful that we have three candidates here today who are willing to devote their time and effort and talent to serve our community. I'm particularly pleased and excited to support Angie Xiao to fill the current vacancy in the school committee. I came to know Angie during her campaign for school committee in spring. AB school district was facing multiple challenges at that time. And school building projects, student wellness, resource for special education. I was impressed by not only her qualification, but also her high spirit to take the challenges and her passion to serve. I remember one Saturday morning, I ran into Angie at the Acton transfer station, and she was talking to the voters, and... So that she thinks school committee should be a platform to incorporate the voice of the community, so the decisions can be made for the best interest of students and the district. And now, today, after so many events, and once again, Angie here, she did not shy away from the, all the challenges, and she presented here, and she wants to serve as a school committee. So why do I think Angie will be the best fit to the school committee? Besides her self-statement and her power of passion and perseverance, the very important reason is she keeps the community at her heart. First, she strongly advocates for making decisions systematically with community voice incorporated. For example, then, she deeply desires to strengthen the communication and collaborations between school district and community. As far as I know, one thing she would try and change is to engage more volunteers from the community. Third, she believes in education. Her vision is to help students from different backgrounds achieve their full potential with available resources, including students with special education needs.
Time's up.
Okay, last but not least, there are 30% of Asian-American living in this community, and they are currently underrepresented in the school committee. If Angie joined the school committee, she will not only bring her experience and skill as a project manager, she will also bring a lot of fresh, new, positive views to the community. So I respectfully ask you to vote for Angie. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, do you want me to?
I guess we can now open it up, right? All the audience comments are in, unless there are...
Yeah, so I was thinking, maybe, why don't we let the candidates have a seat, and then you and I go up there?
You're choreographing this thing. I don't know how to do it yet. Okay, at the direction of the school committee chairman, I'm going to ask anybody on either committee to weigh in with thoughts, opinions, whatever inclination at this point. Katie?
All right, so first, I wanna, again, just echo everybody in thanking the three candidates for stepping forward. You're all very well-qualified, and one of your biggest qualifications is that you were willing to step up and raise your hand. We often don't see that, and so it's much appreciated, and I encourage all of you to stay involved. And just a note of encouragement on that, many, many years ago, at this point, when my dad first ran for school committee, he lost his first race, and then he went on and ended up serving 18 years on the school committee. So it's definitely something that if you don't win or you're not appointed tonight, I really encourage you to stay very involved. And Rachel, I appreciate you putting your name forward. I think for me, tonight, just being so new to the community, I think maybe spending a little more time getting, I know you were part of Boxborough for a while, but getting to know and learn a little bit more about Acton and being involved in some other committees or groups in town would be extremely helpful. So for me, it's coming down, really, to Angie and Dennis. And I think, honestly, as Heather pointed out, this is a five-month term, and I think that considering what the school committee's been going through and having sat through a number of your meetings, I think it would be helpful to have somebody who has the breadth of experience that Dennis has. Many of the members on your committee are fairly new, and I know when we've gone through and had turnover in members, it's more difficult when you have people that come in and don't know some of the sort of processes or regulations, how a committee works, what the subcommittees are, what a municipal budget is. Honestly, it's an issue that a lot of people feel like they might have knowledge of that from a business world, but it's completely different. So for me, I think that Dennis would be helpful for this short term, and so I'm leaning towards voting for him. And then I really encourage Angie, especially, to run in the spring. I think you'd be a great addition to this community.
Did I, Paul, did you have your hand up?
I did, I'm ready to make a motion. We don't do a motion? Oh, it's a roll call vote? Oh, sure.
So we will, we'll definitely, we need a motion on the table. But, and then if you wanna make a motion, then we can continue to have more conversation. It's totally up to you, I guess, at this point, right, Beth? If somebody wants to make a motion? Okay, great, so feel free.
So I'm ready to make a nomination, I guess, that's how I should say it. But before I do, I wanted to also echo that what I heard, I think it was Rachel, say that she came from a place where they had no choice at all. And I think that speaks well for the town, that we actually have a choice. And the problem that I have is I'm happy to work with all three of them, but I can only choose one. And for now, the situation, I think, is just, these circumstances dictate that I nominate Dennis Bruce to serve on the committee.
Joan, seconded it? And I, now, are there any other nominations? Or, help me out here, guys. Help me out, if...
I just wanted to add a comment before we continue. I am very impressed that we got three candidates, very great qualifications. I wanna put in my two bits since I didn't ask any questions. But I really appreciate the fact that Rachel and Angie put their names in, and I did have a chance to talk with Angie before the last election. I actually was hoping that she would win. Angie, rest assured, Mr. Bruce can tell you what it's like to try to get on this committee. He had to try a number of times, because I think, I recall, that the last time we had this sort of setup where we had to pick somebody to take the place of, maybe it was Jonathan Shinitz. Dennis was in there, and he didn't make it, but he ran again, and then he won. He served one term, and then to our disappointment and our dismay, many of us, he didn't run again, and that, so I'm really glad to see he's back. I do happen to agree with people who think that we need an experienced hand, somebody who can just jump right in and be up to speed, understands how the school committee works, understands budgets, finance. He's very sharp, and he's also incredibly personable. I had to work with him, or I shouldn't say had, but anyhow, had to work with him. I had the pleasure of working with him when he was on the school committee, and I think that he would be a real asset for this committee in the, it's actually, I think, seven months of the term. It will end technically at the end of annual town meeting, which is when the new person who's elected next spring actually gets sworn in and starts serving formally. So I really, kudos to the two women for putting their names or throwing their hats in the ring. I hope that Angie, you will try again, and next spring, and not give up, because sometimes the third time's the charm. So, thank you.
I also wanted to thank Rachel and Angie and Dennis, all for stepping forward. This is, it's a courageous act, and it's the highest, in my view, that one of the highest forms of giving back at this level. It's a lot of work and a lot of reward. I wanted to just commend Rachel. I think every, this is a large school committee, and if you're on it long enough, you begin to realize that every single person brings their own kind of views, their own sense of expertise, and it's, the whole is just that much less if one of us leaves. And Christina's shoes are just really difficult to fill. And I don't think anyone can fill them. She was a unique and really incredible contributor, both in her time and in her expertise. We will miss her greatly. But it's the newness, it's the newness of what Rachel and Angie bring that I noticed. Rachel, your exposure to such a wide array of educational models is really quite amazing. And what you would bring to bear, serving on this committee, would be, that would, that will just be totally invaluable, and I encourage you to run in the next election. Angie, what you said about systematic approach, about a budget being really fundamentally a value statement. You characterized the town boards and the school as one family and spoke of trust. These are principles that will drive your practice, and I encourage you also to run. So thank you to everyone. I'm throwing my hat in the ring for Dennis, because I view this time as a huge liminal space for this district. It is a short-term assignment, and whoever fills it needs to really hit the ground running. I am going into my third year, and I joke around that the learning curve the first year was basically straight up. And I took on a lot of professional development myself, just to kind of get myself up to speed. It is a really vast body of knowledge that you have to master. It takes time. And what we don't have in this short period of time where we have this interim superintendent and this kind of special holding place that we're in, is time. So I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring for that reason, for the incomparable Dennis Bruce.
So we have a nomination. If there are no other nominations, then we need to go to a roll call vote. Okay, so let's start with Katie.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
I'll just complete.
Go ahead, Paul. Oh, sorry, did you two vote, okay.
Before I say anything, may I say something? I have my answer.
Is that allowed, if we're in the middle of the roll call vote? Yeah, I mean, go ahead, sure. Just make it really brief, because...
Yeah, so I think I, you know, I've seen Angie made a really great contribution, you know, spend her effort and a lot of time for doing last time, I mean, election. And when Katie start to speak, I have to really agree from my heart. And, I mean, that's really the time we need some expertise, fulfill the very short time. So I really, I'm gonna work with Angie together. I hope Angie, I'm pretty sure Angie will run next spring. And, you know, so I'll vote for Dennis this time. That's aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Aye. So the nomination, thank you very much, Dennis. Thank you very much, Angie and Rachel. I do, I really hope both of you are willing to keep coming and, you know, anyways you wanna get involved and that you run, because I think both of you are really outstanding, outstanding candidates. So, thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Katie moves? Peter, Peter and Joe both second, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, standing, thank you, and congratulations, Dennis.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't make it clear. So Dennis is, you'll need to go to town hall to get sworn in, and then the next meeting, you come to the next meeting. But we would love for you to stay at this meeting, but you can't say anything. So I'm just gonna ask for, hello? Hello? I'm gonna ask for a three-minute break, and then we'll get back together. I'm going to ask for a three-minute break and then we'll get back together.
For anything that is not on our agenda for the evening, again, our public participation policy is two minutes. I, we, you know, it was, it was a unique situation and I wanted everyone to be able to get out what they were trying to say and there weren't a lot of people. But typically, we really have to keep it to two minutes. So, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on something on, not on our agenda? Okay, so, let's move on to the building, I don't have my glasses, sorry, the school building committee update. And I'm going to hand it to Marie first.
Good evening, everybody. So, at your last meeting, we had an extensive report from the building committee about the process that has led us up to narrowing down the number of options. And we asked you to look at the recommendation and the process for funding the feasibility study and the owner's project manager, which we were recommending that at an estimate of $1.3 million, 45 percent of which would be funded by the state, that the remaining 700,000 come from E and D. So, that was one piece of it. And then, the other piece of it is that after a two-year process, the master planning study that got to seven possible options that got narrowed down to two, and with further exploration from the building committee, we were recommending that we actually eliminate the option that included the early childhood center, even though we loved it in so many ways. The idea that it included moving all of the kindergarteners together and the feedback about that was fairly split. And actually, from citizens, there was more negative feedback than positive feedback. Plus, it meant going from six elementary schools to five, which meant that two schools had to be combined into a single school. So, for all of those reasons, we were recommending that the twin school, which is the recommendation for both of those options, that we go with a K-6 elementary in one of the schools, a K-6 elementary in the other school, and then have the preschool built as part of that building. So, that is the recommendation from the building committee. And I want to emphasize that this is prior to the entire feasibility process. So, this is what we're bringing as the recommendation to the special town meetings to fund the feasibility process. And then, over the next 12 to 18 months, we would have extensive looking at available sites. We think that Gates is the recommended site. And again, we talked about using Gates and Douglas as a campus and building some connections between the two properties and having some parking and traffic flow on the Douglas part of the site, as well as some playgrounds. So, actually, the number of kids on that campus would be comparable to the number of kids we have at Gates and Douglas now. So, that's what we think is the preferred site, but we're going to further explore Conant. We know there are some wetlands there. The work that was done by Doran Whittier stated that because of the wetlands, the new, if there were a twin school there, that we might have to phase in there because we couldn't build the whole school while Conant is still standing. So, that was part of the reason why Gates was considered to be a preferred site. We've gotten questions about, has there been or will there be traffic studies? There will definitely be traffic studies, but that's part of the feasibility study. So, it is possible that a different site would be determined during feasibility. And we know we're looking at Gates, we know we're looking at Conant. We may look at possibly other sites within Acton as well. So, the presentation is in your packet again. I went through it last time and you had a good discussion. And we wanted to bring it back to you for a vote tonight. And then, over the next few months, community outreach is going to be the priority leading up to the special town meeting.
All right, is, are there any discussions yet? Paul?
Oh, actually, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh. Look at that. He wants to go home and watch the Patriots, I know.
Okay, hold on there. I gotta go, I have two questions. One is, just in terms of process, the feasibility is technic, the feasibility study is technically module three. So, we're going to be entering, is that, I just want a clarification on that. So, we're actually entering into module two, so, but the, we're voting on the money for the feasibility study? So, that's my first question.
Okay, so, what would happen at the special town meeting is if both towns approve it, we would move forward actually into module two and then module three. Module two is the module by which we select the owner's project manager and the design architect. So, it's a relatively short module, and then that brings us into feasibility. But the money approved at the special town meetings would be used for design and feasibility.
Can, can I add that because the way town meetings work, there's a timeline that you work backwards from? And so, with a December 4th meeting, there are deadlines, and I just saw it last night, but Boxborough's deadlines are, end of September, we have to have the warrant intent in, and then pretty early in October, the full warrant article. So, we don't get till December 4th to frame all that. And we also need to know the school committee's intent to be able to do our community outreach.
So, my second question is, how will the project managers, are you going to be interviewing firms? I know that the Minuteman Building was, I think the project manager is from Gilbane, and they're, they're really far ahead of schedule and also coming in under budget. So, I just wondered what the process was for selecting a project manager.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Diane. You raised a couple of good questions. And just to follow up on what Marie had said and what Mary had said, the vote that you're being asked to take.
Sorry. The learning curve.
He's a new guy, but he'll.
Thank you, Diane. Two, two really good questions. And to follow up briefly on what Marie has said and what Mary just shared, in my mind, your vote tonight does two things. First, it affirms the process that has been ongoing through the master planning process and the work that the building committee has been doing in reviewing all of the potential factors that go into a school building project. And what the building committee is recommending, after all this work, is that the building, the potential building project consists of a twin school. So, Marie went through that. And so, the vote affirms that part of the process. And then, effectively, and perhaps more importantly, it starts the last phase of module one. And, and that ends with hopefully, a vote of two positive town meeting votes for the appropriation for the feasibility study part of, of the process. And you're right, once, once there's local approval, MSBA will work with the regional district to establish and develop a feasibility study agreement. And that's, that's an agreement that is boilerplate with MSBA. And then, and then we enter module two, which as Marie indicated, is a module where the district goes about the process of forming the project team. So, the project team consists of an owner's project manager, the OPM, and that's required by MSBA for a potential project of this size, and the securing of the, the designer services. And, and once, and that has to be done following very specific MSBA guidelines. So, so the district will put out a request for qualifications for the owner's project manager. That's the first step in the process. MSBA gets involved in that part of the process. They have to approve the regional district's eventual pick to take on that role. And then, the owner's project manager works with the district, again, to put out an RFQ for designer services. And, and that is to hire an architectural firm that will do the bulk of the feasibility study, go through the feasibility study process. In that process, the, the district will choose three top, their three top choices for designers, and then that has to go to the MSBA's designer selection panel where we'll have, where the district will have a vote on that panel. The panel will review the three firms, and then a vote will be taken to determine who that designer will be. And the way, in my opinion, the way that the district has gone about the planning process will be in very, very, very good shape to, as soon as the, as soon as the, as soon after the December 4th town meetings, we can get right, we can move forward on that module two, but you can't move forward on it until you have secured the appropriation to pay for that. So, so that's an important process. And then, finally, the feasibility study, although the committee has, is voting on a preferred option at this time, that allows you to really start the process. And MSBA, given the work you've done, many districts get to this point and they're not quite at that step. So, they, they do go to town meeting for feasibility funds, but then they have to spend, they, they typically would have to spend more money to get through the part of the process that you're already at. So, MSBA will look at that favorably. But that is a starting point, and that preferred option will be much more intensively vetted. And that's where you'll see comprehensive traffic studies, much more comprehensive civil engineering work done. And, and as part of that, MSBA will require the committee, and, and the building committee has really worked with Doran Whittier on this, the first place they have to, MSBA wants you to start is, is it, do you need a new project? Or what, what is the advantage of rehabbing, for example, Douglas School? So, you have to go through that process, and the designer team will help us with that. And then, you go through all of the other checklist items that MSBA has on their feasibility study agreement. And then, as Maria indicated, that's a 12 to 18 month process. I think for this district, that process will be shortened somewhat because of all the work that has already come. So, tonight, that's really what you're voting on. You're voting on the preferred option, which helps us jumpstart this process, take it to town meeting for the feasibility study agreement funding. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, so, it sounds like, so, if we know what we want to put on the land, it's, that informs the feasibility study and can just accelerate the process.
It will, but the, but that, that preferred option will still, will require, as I, as I said, an intensive amount of vetting, as well as MSBA will require us to look at other alternative sites. But again, you know, the committee has a bit of a heads up because they've been working on that. So, that, that will help the process, I think, go more smoothly, frankly.
I just want to ask a little follow-up, sort of building on what Diane said, because I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did watch it. I noticed in the presentation that was given, there is like a more specific project description of 21 classrooms for each school and all that. But one of the things that stuck out when we interviewed you was the example you gave of the school where there was extra classrooms built in, and then it turned out that they needed them. And just looking at our, our enrollment parts, reports, that's part of all the feasibility stuff, right? Like, they'll relook at, you know?
Yeah, so, there's, there's still a couple more steps. That could be.
Thank you. There's still a couple, there's still a couple more steps we have to complete in module one. We're anticipating shortly, a meeting with MSBA to review the enrollment projections, and at which time, they will suggest to us an, an enrollment size based on the work that they've done. And, you know, we'll have an opportunity to have a conversation with them about that. There may be an opportunity, as I indicated earlier, to negotiate with them a little bit, depending on information we might have that either they didn't have or don't have currently, or, or perhaps new information. For example, this fall's enrollment numbers. So, so that's still an ongoing process. If, if the district, in Winchester, as I was describing it, what happened was, we did negotiate an enrollment number. The school committee felt strongly that, that, that that enrollment number still did not provide for the number of classrooms that they thought in the future they would need. So, they did work with MSBA to include those additional classrooms, but the MSBA did not participate in the cost of those additional classrooms.
That, that answers it. I, I just, I, that's my biggest concern going forward, is, is the enrollment piece, because our classrooms are like humongous, a lot of them, so.
I want to add two points. So, one is that when we, and by we, I mean Marie, submitted the enrollment numbers, she went beyond what they request. So, they have a time period, but she gave them much more recent data to show our increasing numbers. So, hopefully, that will help us in our negotiation. But second, one of the advantages of a twin school over a triple school is when we go to then address the needs in the remaining school, we will then look at enrollment numbers at that time, which I would expect by then, we're on an upward trend. So, that gives us a little bit of flexibility across the district, so we don't get too slammed, yeah.
So, I'm just curious, at what point do the enrollment numbers get set in stone, so to speak?
It'll be prior, it'll, it'll be within, I would imagine, the next month, but sometime shortly after we have the meeting with MSBA.
Can I just add a little bit? So, the date for the enrollment to be certified is October 3rd, and we haven't gotten a date from them for a meeting yet. So, if it goes beyond that, it will be because, be because they have extended it, which actually would be good, because we would have more firm enrollment numbers for this year. We want to rerun our projections based on this year's numbers, given particularly the kindergarten class. But when, so, Tessa, we're exactly where you are. We want to make sure that the number of classrooms and the size and all of that suits the possible enrollment and, and the trajectory that we've been seeing. So, when we submitted the enrollment information, as Mary said, I included all the most up-to-date. For example, housing sales, they only asked for up to 2012. And I gave them all the housing sales up and, up through July of 2017. And as I said last time, in 2015, there was a 30 percent increase in housing turnover in Acton and in Boxborough, and that has held. And these last three months may have even exceeded that. So, we're watching that very closely. But they allowed us to say how many students we wanted to build the school for, and I went with a high number, much higher than what Doran Whittier had projected through their study. And the 21 classrooms is more than the original study had called for. It was more like 18 classrooms. And one of the downsides of that was we were going to have to have two at some grades and three at other grades. So, so we're doing everything that we can to make this happen. We also know that we can specify our needs for special education spaces in classrooms and for preschool spaces in classrooms, because the preschool's not based on any particular enrollment. So, that is an area that can give us some flexibility for any peaks along the way. And, and that's why we put in for eight classrooms of preschool, when right now, we have five in Acton and two in Boxborough. And so, that'll give us some flexibility over time as to what we do with that. So, we share your concern, and, and we're working towards doing everything we can to account for that.
Okay, if there are no more comments, I am going to entertain a motion. Waiting.
So, I'd like to move that the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee vote to approve the building committee's recommendation of identifying a twin K through six school with space for preschool classrooms as the preferred school construction option. Further, that the funding source for the next phase of the required MSBA process, the feasibility study, being brought for approval at the December 4th, 2017 special town meetings in Acton and Boxborough, be from the school district's E and D fund.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Diane, yeah. Okay, Bill?
Thank you. The next item is the Soccer Boosters donation of a sound system. There's a copy of a memo from the athletic director in your, in your packet. The memo outlines the purpose of the donation, to purchase a sound system for the lower playing field. My recommendation to the school committee is that you accept this donation with gratitude from the AB Soccer Boosters with assistance from the AB Youth Soccer and Boys and Girls High School lacrosse teams.
Move to approve with gratitude?
Second.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Moving on to subcommittee reports. Does anyone have a report or? I think. Uh.
That's because my, my, Mike wasn't on.
She's just trying to make Bill feel comfortable.
Yeah, I felt, I was feeling bad, so I thought I'll just leave it off and see. Yeah, it's normal. Okay, so, does anyone have anything to report from their committees? I, yeah, and there really haven't been any means, but I have a couple of things. One, ALG, the next meeting is on September the 28th at 7:30 in the morning at Town Hall. And the other thing is that FinCom, the last time FinCom met, and Jason's here, you can correct me, but they're looking, they're in the process of developing their point of view, and they have asked us to attend, and it doesn't have to be all of us, they've asked at least some of us to attend the October 10th meeting to present the building project plan and, so, just to catch them up to date. We can discuss that further. Those are the only two things I have.
Are the P and B is the 28th?
The 28th, yes, at 7:30. Yeah.
FYI, BLF is on Tuesday, the 12th at 7:00 in the library, Boxborough Library.
AM or PM?
PM.
Okay, so, ours is 7:30 AM.
Ours is 7:30 PM. Sorry, 7:00 PM.
Okay, okay, great. So, any? No, no subcommittee reports?
I'll just mention, the school building committee, the next meeting is October 11th at 7:00 PM. We will be in, isn't that right?
I think it's September 13th.
Oh, sorry, yeah, because, because I moved to October because of the thing you said, but yeah, it's coming up. Sorry, thank you. September 13th at 7:00 PM, and we will be in the administration building in the conference room downstairs there. Yes, room 13. What's that? 7:00 PM.
Okay, the next order of business is we need to reschedule a couple of meetings. The October 5th meeting, I think you all got a doodle poll on that, is the same night as the high school, I think it's the high school open house. So, we need to reschedule that. And based on feedback, and I know you gave me this. So, yeah, so if you're okay with that, Tuesday, the 3rd. Can you make that, Dennis? Okay, great. So, we would, we need to vote on that. But before we do, the second meeting that we need to move is on?
November 2nd.
Ah, sorry. Yeah, okay. It's the November 2nd meeting, because there is, that's when the MASC, MASs Conference, their, their statewide yearly conference is being held, and I know there are a few of us that want to go.
Are we moving everyone?
Well, I thought maybe we could vote on both. If you prefer, we can vote on one at a time. Yeah, okay, so, let's just vote on the first one. So, all those in favor of moving the October 5th meeting to October the 3rd?
Hang on, if you're going to vote, we need one more second.
Yep. Oh.
I'll move.
Um, Paul is supposed to jump in at that point and give the motion. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to.
Just a, yeah. All right, well, if there's a, yeah, if, if you're okay with that, then I think we should move it. We don't need to actually vote on changes to the calendar?
Not to our meeting schedule.
Okay, okay, great. And then, what is the sense of the committee about moving the, actually, what we thought we would do is combine the November 2nd meeting and the November 16th meeting to one meeting on November the 9th, because we have three meetings that month. So, combining it to November the 9th and then keeping the November 30th meeting. So, what is the sense of the committee on that? Yep, Paul?
There was the question as to the time, 7:00 or 7:30?
Yes.
7:00.
Yeah, 7:00 would be, yeah, if, 7 o'clock, yes. Are there anyone, is there anyone that's just said, no way, I can't do it? Diane?
I'm not, I'm not saying I can't do it. I'm just wondering, so, I'm just confused again. The November 2nd and November 16th, we're combining to November 9.
Yes.
And then, we're having November 23rd.
No, November 30th.
30th, 30th. With everything going on, I know if it's in our calendars, I guess we've reduced the meeting, and that's okay?
We have reduced, or we've combined, yeah. That, that's a great question, and maybe that's something that we need to, you know, talk about.
But we added a meeting. We had three meetings in November, if you didn't.
We did, because of the special town meeting on December the 4th. We added the November 30th meeting so that we could get together for whatever last-minute things we needed to do before that meeting, town meeting. Hmm?
I guess that's my concern, is I know we were putting these meetings in for a reason. We can always take a meeting out later. It's harder to add a meeting in. Are we smarter keeping November 9th, 16th, and 30th? I mean, I hate having all these meetings, but I also hate being at the end of October and suddenly adding a meeting, because we're finding that we're behind in getting ready for a special town meeting, or budget process is starting or something.
So, what are the other thoughts?
It's easier to cancel a meeting.
It is easier to cancel a meeting. So, is, would you guys prefer to just keep it, keep the 16th, the 9th, and then the 30th?
Yes.
So, that's a general census. Okay.
Not the 2nd?
The 2nd one, we have to move because of the conference that's down in, on the Cape. Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just repeat that?
Yes.
So, we are, so we are moving the, you know, the 2nd meeting to November 9. And then, the rest passes.
Yes. That was the sense I got.
Keep the 16th.
We're moving it, so, Beth, we're keeping the 16th, and we're keeping the 30th, and we're just moving the 2nd to the 9th. Okay, great. That's all I have. There are some things in the FYI, but I'm going to let Bill, if you have anything else to say?
No, I do not.
Okay. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? 25 minutes over schedule. I'm telling you, I'm getting better.